Good evening, everyone. Tonight is a work session of the Planning Board. We also have a combined discussion, roundtable discussion with the Economic Development Committee. The first item on our agenda is roll call. Susan Axelrod.
Here.
Joe Murphy.
Here.
Robin Pothier. Liz Karp.
Here.
Kaybird Wilson.
Here.
And Maria Mack is here. Let's start off with Old Tower Hill Road. We have Pam Stacy here from Able City East, and I believe we will have Jason King on Zoom? No?
Thank you for having me. I'm Pamela Stacy King with Able City East, and Jason King will not be able to join us, but I've got you well in hand. So just to start off the discussion, looking, a quick agenda for what I'll be talking about, looking, reminding about the vision, looking at some other examples of form-based codes, as well as then looking a little bit at what's in your code to then open up the discussion. With that, also wanted to note that there will be a public code workshop on Wednesday, July 30th, in these council chambers at 6:00 PM, where there'll be a presentation to the public, as well as boards of the code to help orient the public to the code and welcome their input as well.
Is this a county council meeting or is it a public?
Public information meeting.
So like a shorter version of the five-day charrette?
Exactly, yes.
Hosted.
So I know the Old Tower Hill Road neighborhood area has been in discussion for many years, particularly with the Economic Development Committee, but where this really starts with pulling together the vision that we're working from began in March of last year, 2024, where we held a charrette. Many people that were in this room attended that, along with many members of the public, and really just, we started out just by asking, what do you want this area to be, and then pulled together the vision for that, that then became the Old Tower Hill Road Neighborhood Plan. Within that vision, you know, looking at the existing conditions and saying, what really could this be? And so pulling together, you know, this illustrative master plan really looks at filling in a lot of the pieces that are missing and some redevelopment and showing how much potential there really is in this area. Some people can look at the Old Tower Hill Road area and say, it's done, it's built, it's a lot of asphalt, but that's what it is, but it could be something much more. In visualizing that, as an example, the intersection of Kingstown Road and Old Tower Hill Road, you've got the Bank of America site there, but really, you know, what could that be? Could it have a better look? Could it be something better for the public? Could it have a green on the corner, with then the buildings fronting that instead of the parking lot? You have many great examples in downtown Wakefield, as well as others around you, that show what a great commercial area can be, that it's not just something you drive to, but it's something that's part of your community and that you're spending time there. In addition, just another example of that vision that we heard from people, you have the bike trail that runs at the edge of the Old Tower Hill area, and it's kind of feels neglected a lot, it's very overgrown, everything turns its back towards the bike trail. And so, you know, we've said, what if something fronted the bike trail? What if that was something that, you know, was a centerpiece of your community? It connects so much in this area, and so how about we celebrate that and really get people out of their cars, onto their feet, onto their bikes, and so really working on pulling people into the community instead of passing by. With that, even within that report, looking at, you know, saying, how do we make this vision become a reality? And so that's where we started looking at form-based codes in order to create that walkable public realm. It's not just a store on a lot, but it's part of the community. And the form-based code regulates the form of the buildings, the streets, and the public spaces. It is a joint public and private work when everything comes together. Some of your work, you've already started with looking at your streets, you know, you've added, upgraded sidewalks, looked at drainage, adding bike lanes, and so the code looks at that as well. You're not the only people to look at form-based codes. Here, I have a list of form-based codes that have been implemented in New England, either a full form-based code or form-based controls as part of an overall code update. And so they're happening around the country, but we wanted to focus more on ones that are closer to you. With that, one of the early ones that was adopted was in Jamestown, Rhode Island, in 2007, and Jason King, my partner, was a part of that initial code that was put together. And so we just wanted to show, you know, putting, you know, they have their regulating plan, and with that, you know, there are new mixed-use commercial buildings that have come in under the code. They're built up closer to the street, they are a mix of uses, and so showing that development can happen under these codes. We know there's been some questions about why this type of development or this kind of code. There's also been residential, new residential that's been put in, and also just existing businesses that have been upgraded according to the code and rehabbed, and just trying to show some real-world examples of a code that's closer to you and is working well for them. Form-based codes prioritize the pedestrian and the pedestrian experience. It doesn't forget about the car and how you get there and how you get around, but it really does prioritize the pedestrian, because when you get in your car or out of your car, you're starting and ending your trip as a pedestrian. And so we vacation in places that prioritize the pedestrian, so why not look at those places to emulate, in addition to where you already have here locally? And so this is just one more built example. These are live-work units. This is actually from Montgomery, Alabama, but it's getting that storefront up on the sidewalk. This has apartments on the second floor, so it doesn't have to be very tall, but it's getting that mixed-use nature in. And then you have your parking, but then you have this nice wide sidewalk that's then you're able to go to the café that's there and the wine shop and enjoy your time outside. And so that's similar to the vision that you have here for the Old Tower Hill Road Neighborhood Area. One other thing before we get into your code and just quick overview of what's in it and what's there is looking at, you know, it's talked a lot about how form-based codes unlock development potential. You have what's been existing, and so why would changing the regulations make investment happen? And so here's kind of an overview slide where it is creating clear and predictable rules. You have your vision of what you want, but then this is changing the rules to match that vision. And so when people come in, they can see where does the community want that building placed, what is happening between the building and the street? And so it's trying to reduce the uncertainty for both developers and property owners as they're going to see what they can do with their property. It increases property and land value. Walkable areas outperform conventional development anywhere you look. It supports local business growth. It provides diverse commercial spaces, different types of spaces, both the large stores and the small stores, home businesses. And it's also adding something that you can't currently have in the area, which is residential. You have the single-family or the housing that's around Old Tower Hill Road, but it allows now for adding residential in addition to the commercial. It's not that it's trying to replace the commercial, it's trying to add to what you can have on your property, and having those customers right there within walking distance also supports those businesses with a very strong base of people that are going to be coming back time and time again. Traditionally, having this type of development increases your tax revenue per acre, because you are condensing and reducing the amount of parking that you have, so you have more both commercial square footage and residential square footage that then increases your overall tax revenue per acre. And it's resilient to market changes, because as, you know, lots of shopping goes online, people are looking for more experiences versus just places that they can go pick something up from the store, it allows what's in the buildings to quickly adapt and change their uses as needed, whether it's office, which also there's a lot less office space now, but to more use-type uses within the building. So form-based codes create places that people want to invest in, because they're places that people want to be. And so a quick overview, and then we can start the discussion. I know you guys received the code, and you've, some of you have had more of a chance to go through it than others. So just quickly going through what is in the form-based code for the Old Tower Hill Road area. And so it starts with an introduction, then it talks about the form-based districts. This is kind of what your traditional zoning would be, but it's in a more form-based manner. It still goes into permitted uses, but they tend to be more general. General standards, which includes building standards, lighting standards, site standards, mechanical equipment, parking standards. We don't always have this next section, building type standards, in all of our codes, but we felt it was good to have here, because it really shows how to do a Main Street building, or how to do these types of buildings that we used to know how to do very well. They're very street-oriented, and so it's just kind of like a reminder, these are the types of buildings you could use, and this is how they are put together. Then there's streets and civic space standards, because it's not just the building, it's not just the private lot, it is also how you're getting to those and how the street works with it. And then there's an administration section along with definitions. Within the introduction, there's also a section, how to use this form-based code, and kind of walk someone through, because it's something that's different. You know, what sections do I need to look at? What am I looking for in those sections, so that I can figure out how, what can I do with my property, what's permitted? And so at the very beginning, within the introduction, we have this how-to-use-this-code section to help walk you through what's in each section and where you need to look and what it is that you're looking for. Within the form-based district, sometimes called transect zones, here for South Kingstown, we identified four transect zones, and those are the gateway destination, neighborhood core, neighborhood center, and residential neighborhood. And those are then placed within this regulating plan, so you can start by looking at, where is my site? What transect or form-based district is it in? Following that comes the transect standards, and these are very graphic, they are tied to numbers, but they really look at, where do you place your building on your lot? Within the conventional zoning or with FAR, it just kind of tells you how much building you can have. It's not telling you where to place it. And with form-based code, you want to be placing it towards the street, you want to be creating that vibrant sidewalk, so all the businesses are working together. One term that's in here that's a little different, and so I just wanted to highlight it, is when you, is, we use build-two zones instead of a setback for that front spot where your building is located. A setback is a line where you cannot put your building between the edge of your property line and that space typically, you know, could be 20 feet, 25 feet, but your building could be anywhere behind that. A build-two zone is giving some flexibility, but it's really a small number, so typically, like, it could be between five and 10 feet from your property line. And so what that's doing is it's allowing flexibility. This is an image from not too far away, this is in Belmont, Massachusetts, where it shows there's a building that has a zero setback, that I think this was zero to 10 feet. And so it's right up against the public sidewalk. The next building is then set back. They've created a courtyard between the edge of the public sidewalk, which is then their property line, and their building. And the one next to them is even closer to the street. This was an older building, so it has porch and stairs going up to it, and so there's a little bit of flexibility in the building. It gives you some variety, but it's also allowing the business, the property owner, to decide what to do with that public space between the street and the sidewalk and their building, to make it more interesting and lively and based on what's in the building. In addition, within these standards, it's also looking a lot at height, and so we've told you where to place your building, now we're telling you how tall it can be, and then it also gets into parking location, which tends to be behind the building or to the side of the building. And so that's within each of these transect zones, goes into what those numbers are for each of the different districts. As I mentioned before, there are still permitted uses, but the list is kind of condensed, they're more general than what the existing in the conventional permitted uses are. And so it's trying to say, yes, we care about what's in the different districts, but it's not as important as the form of the building. So there is some still controls on uses, but it's much smaller than conventional zoning. I'm going to try and get through this, so we can get to the discussion. As I mentioned before, then it goes to the building standards, is kind of how to put your building together, what happens when you get to have a wider facade. It gets very detailed, how to do a shopfront building, as well as facade transparency. We don't want blank walls, we want interesting buildings that people are going to be interested in seeing, and so it's regulating those form pieces of the building. But it still deals with parking, although parking requirements are condensed, it really focuses on sharing parking, so there's incentives for trying to have shared parking agreements in order to have a reduced number of parking spaces, but still have enough parking within the district, and reducing curb cuts, so you have more consistent sidewalks. Building types, trying to show people generally what types of buildings, they're looking more at the form of the building, but looking a little bit at the details of that as well, to help whoever is building to get it right. And then the streets and civic spaces, we did, this is a section that was added to quite a bit from the, what was in the original document, as we were going into this project and looking at streets and looking at street standards, you know, where you have your collector streets and your local streets that are existing, but then hoping to get at least a few more. And so putting together what are the standards for those, you know, what are your corner radius, how many lanes, how big are the lanes, how fast are you trying to get people to go? And so those are now in here as well, as well as sample street sections. So if, you know, you can go through and say, well, what is it I want my street to be? And so these street sections are in there to help give guidance as well. Then we get into the administration section. This was also added to from what was in the report document, so this is updated for the code and kind of going through what is the review process. I know staff still needs to go through this and make sure that we've aligned it with current processes, but, you know, looking at, you know, the different, the review process, how to amend things, and conflicts and interpretations, as well as what needs to be submitted when you submit an application. And then at the very end, we have design guidelines that, you know, here, the style of building matters a lot, and so then, within the code, it's getting the building form, but then if you want to look at style, these give guidance on styles that are appropriate for South Kingstown. And so, next steps after this workshop, as I mentioned before, we're having a public meeting on July 30th, after which we will still be collecting comments, the document will still be revised, the document is not done. We want to get the comments in order to get it right, and then after that, a more formal adoption process will be taken. And so with that, thank you for your time, and I'm here to answer questions and open it up to discussion.
Thank you, Pam. I'm sure there'll be many questions. Thanks to the Economic Development Committee for being here tonight. Since we have name tags and you don't, maybe you could just start from one end to the other and tell us your name. There isn't a mic right there. We try to get you as close as possible.
Hi, everybody. I'm Randy Apuzo, Vice Chair of the EDC. Thanks for having me tonight.
I'm Susan Marcus, a member of the Economic Development Committee.
Mike Aggers, I'm the Chair of the EDC.
Ken Tatsner, Member of the EDC.
Jack Cadman, I'm a member.
Kirk Brown, also a member.
Very good. We'll assume you haven't read the 97-page document.
Yes.
Of course. Jamie, anything brief from your end before we start and on questions and comments?
I think just on our side that this is a working, breathing document. It's the format and basis for the discussion tonight. It's not a final document, as Pam has alluded to this evening. We need the feedback, we need some input from property owners. Within our contract, there is a code-testing aspect of that, where they'll pick one or two properties, or actually code-test it on a property or two and see what the development potential is. If we have a property owner who wants to come forward and work with us, we, you know, we hope maybe we have three, four, and we have trouble selecting who to work with. If not, we will somewhat randomly pick some of the more prominent parcels in town and code-test one or two of those, so that people understand. And with regards to code-testing, you've seen a little bit of that in the March, June, July of last 2024 endeavors, where they looked at the development potentials of particular properties. Those would just be refined based on this final draft of the code and how the implications were there. Again, we're available as a department to answer questions. I will ask, we want to be respectful of our consultants' time and the scope of services and the effort they're putting. If that people have comments, concerns, they want to provide input, please send them to me as a Planning Director, and we will amass them and then give them to the consultant to vet and figure out how those can or cannot be incorporated in, versus getting random emails from different people at different times throughout the process. So again, I would respectfully ask that people contact our office for comments and input, and we'll make sure that the consultant gets those in a timely manner to potentially make revisions to the plans. I will recognize Mr. Marin is here from the Town Council. And again, Maria, I know it's an open meeting tonight with the discussion with EDC, but I would be open if Mr. Marin has any comments, since he is here tonight, or wants to ask a question that we allow him to do.
Of course.
So.
I'm your assistant.
I put you on the spot, Mike, so.
All right, who would like to start? Liz?
Hi, Pam, thank you. That was wonderful, and the document was so thorough, too thorough, it was tough to get through it all. I do have two questions, however. On page 31, there is a drawing that caught my eye. It says shopfront, and it's quite specific as far as the cornice and the upper facade and the storefront, and I'm just, yeah, there it is. And I'm just wondering how you expect or propose that that will be used? Because it seems more than just guidelines, it seems very, very specific. So I'm wondering if you expect a building owner to use that, a contractor to use it? What happens to something as detailed as this in terms of guidelines?
Well, this is part of... Sorry. This portion is part of the code, and so although there are some things, especially at the end within the design guidelines that are guidance, this is regulatory. And so this is trying to say, you know, again, with a shopfront, you know, you want that look of individual buildings, and you can see into the store, this is also part of the facade, transparency is a part of this, and so it's trying to get the details of how to do that storefront correctly. Materials are a little bit less important, you know, you could have steel and along with the glass, but it's trying to show the form that that storefront should be taking.
And I guess, in addition to my previous question, who regulates that? Who enforces that? How, well, let me rephrase it. How is that enforced?
Well, that would be as, when you're giving your submittals in order to get plan and building approval, then that would be part of those submittals for the design of the building.
Okay, thank you. One other, hopefully, quick question. Could you just explain again what the build-two zone is as compared to the setback? I don't understand that.
Yeah, let me go back to that slide and see if I can explain that.
I mean, I actually lived, I raised my children in Belmont, Massachusetts, so I'm familiar with that area.
Just while Pam's pulling that slide up, in our current regulations, we have building setbacks. And basically, as Pam stated, those are things, you cannot place your building any closer than that. So if you're in the commercial highway zone and there's a building setback of 30 feet from the front property line, you can't build it 25 feet from the property line. You can build it no closer than 30. But there's nothing to prevent someone from pushing it 70 feet back and then not knowing what's between the 70 feet and the zero feet? And the Form-Based Code attempts to address that, that says you have to build between zero feet and then, I think in the example was 10 feet. And then if you do it zero feet, you're looking at a building that's fenestrated with the look that you referenced, where there's a main entrance and the second floor is articulated and there's a top portion of the building. And if you set it back to the non-build line, that there's some purpose to that space between the build-to line and the front of the building. It's not devoid of landscaping. It's not just, I'm going to pave it. There is some articulation or interest in the public realm between the front build-to line and the front of the building.
And just wanted to add to that, that when we developed the CD, the Commercial Downtown zoning district that we now have, we intentionally tried to modify that so that buildings would be pushed closer to the sidewalk and to the street and to have that kind of mixed-use sort of feeling, even though of course that doesn't go as far as this does.
So just as a quick example.
We've been thinking about that for some time.
A quick example, where Domino's and Dell's is in that shopping center? That's the result of a setback. That that building could not be built any closer than 20 feet from the front property line, but it didn't say anywhere else it couldn't be built. Couldn't be built in a front yard setback, side yard setback, or a rear yard setback. But within that envelope, it could go anywhere. What the Form-Based Code attempts to do is put it in a place so that you get the appearance on the street that you're striving to get. And Pam can go back through this photo.
Thank you, Jamie, in helping to explain that and articulate it. And this photo is trying to look more at that build-to zone where it's keeping things close to the sidewalk, keeping the buildings up by the street so you have that pedestrian area. But it's not, but there is some flexibility within that zone. So you, not everything is necessarily lined up on like you must build here. It still gives that flexibility so that you can have the variety of what you're doing in front of your building, but it's not parking. It's something that's oriented towards the pedestrian experience.
Susan?
Hi, I have a question too, and it's also more general. So Old Tower Hill Road and Main Street and Kingstown Road are all state roads. And right now, if they have sidewalks, they're very narrow concrete sidewalks. Can you explain to me, you know, where the property line falls? Because it seems to go up to the right-of-way. And is there a way that our sidewalks will be wider, like they are in your photographs, with buildings further back, but then wide sidewalks as opposed to our little three-foot wide cement sidewalks? Like, how does the right-of-way property line and sidewalk configurations work out in this math?
So just like in this image, you know, their property line, if you were to look at this, is right at the edge of this building. And so that's their public sidewalk. This is wider than your state road five-foot one, but just as an example. Then when the building is pushed back, whether it's a five foot to 10 feet or depending on what the zone is, then that becomes more pedestrian space. So you widen the sidewalk on the private property in order to get that better feeling sidewalk in front of these buildings. Because like you said, they are state roads. There's a limit to how big those sidewalks are. So it's a mix between the public sidewalk and then the private sidewalk and then the building.
Thank you. But you could theoretically end up with a, with a building pushed right up to that little skinny cement sidewalk that wouldn't allow any, that you really can't walk, you really can't walk to a breast on that sidewalk at this point. Like, it's not that lovely wide expanse that you have in lots of your photographs unless the right-of-way is actually further deep into the property than the sidewalk is. And maybe that's, you're not the right person to answer that question. Where does the right-of-way and the property line end in relationship to where the sidewalk is? Do we know?
Typically, the edge of the right-of-way and the property line are at the back of the sidewalk. And so with that, it's making sure that we have that build-to zone placed appropriately. That's why they are not all zero feet. You do want to make sure you're getting some of that setback. And so with that, you know, we need to go back and look at all those numbers and make sure that we are allowing for that space and we're not just on that five-foot sidewalk, but we're creating the space to get that larger sidewalk.
So we could push the setback back a few feet to accommodate a wider sidewalk?
Yeah.
It's not a, if I understand this correctly, you're saying it's not really a setback, it's a build-to line, but the build-to line doesn't have, doesn't mean it, it parallels the edge of the sidewalk. The build-to line is set back a certain amount from the sidewalk. And so what it does, the problem with having a setback is you're giving the developer a huge amount of discretion as to where they put the property as long as it's behind the setback. The build-to concept is you're requiring them to put activity at a certain point so that you have, you have a pre-planned front, a pre-planned usage. I mean, I, I, I'm being clear about the point, but it's a completely different concept. So you're going to still have space between the sidewalk and the building because you're going to dictate through the Form-Based Code that you can't build within a certain amount of distance. And I don't remember what it is. I know it's in the details.
No, I understand what you're saying there, Kaper, but in some cases in the zones three and four, the front build-to zone could be zero feet. So that is right at the sidewalk, right at that skinny little sidewalk.
Yeah, so then your objection isn't to the concept of the build-to concept, it's to the delineation within that zone. You want to make sure that, that the requirements don't allow a zero.
So as I mentioned earlier, that this is the format and basis for the discussion to move forward. And I mentioned that this has to be tested on multiple properties by our consulting team. So one of the aspects of, I think it's on page, getting to the page. Sorry. I think it's on page 22. To the top right, there's a small diagram. And in that diagram, there's a property line, a setback line, a build-to, BTZ zone. So again, these are recommendations now that in essence have to be beta-tested to the specifics of the four transect zones in South Kingstown. So that, I understand Susan's point. It could be a glitch in the code is if, for example, on Old Tower Hill Road, we'll use where Chipotle's was built as an example. If the sidewalk there is only four feet wide and the property line is on the backside of the sidewalk, you probably don't want to build to line right at that property line. That, that kind of front space in BTZ zone, the build-to zone, needs to be adjusted there. And then you need to articulate that the sidewalk, if it's, you know, less than five feet, needs to be added to. Or again, you're driving home what you want the streetscape to look for. And again, we need to look specific at how our properties relate to the code. We're not at that phase yet, but it's a good observation and point that Susan brings up because again, what we don't want is unintended consequences when a developer says, I read the code and I, it doesn't say anything, it says four-foot sidewalk, property line, and gives me the right to build right up to that property line. But that's potentially not what the cross-section represents or the look you're looking at. We are going through that process to make sure the code is representative of an end product.
Other comments, questions? Don't be shy, folks. Just go up, grab the mic. Robin? Go ahead, Mike.
So we're really interested in the July 30th public hearing. What's the plan for inviting people to that and publicizing that?
So I know we still have the website for the report, which we'll be updating. We have a flyer that we have put together in order to get the word out. I've got to finalize that with Jamie, who will then help get the word out that way. We have the initial list of people that came to the charrette as well to make sure that they're informed. And then also working with Jamie and Brian, we did a trifold informational flyer that can be used to help bring that to the property owners and help get the word out that way as well.
We would also potentially intend to send invitation to each property owner within the proposed four transects. So again, so some, you know, it's my property. I didn't hear about it. If we send them a mail or it gives them the opportunity. And again, we're hoping also to have Able City Ease on the ground on July 30th and 31st, potentially available for meetings, staff interaction and questions. But the formal presentation would, and interaction would be that evening of the 30th. So again, we'll do our best, social media, Facebook, Instagram, help of the Town Council. We'll make multiple announcements at Town Council meetings through the Town Manager's Office. We'll do our best to get that out there. We'll work with, we'll do press releases. So hopefully, now again, it's a time, we'll potentially write an article the week before the meeting or two weeks before the meeting announcing what's happening and something exciting is occurring in South Kingstown.
I think that was a really good question. I've been thinking about this as well because today's the 8th and the 30th, not too far away. And, you know, public in the middle of summer, it can be challenging to get folks here. And I think, Pam, you said that we do have the information from folks that email addresses and what have you that attended the initial charrette. We had also talked about potential meetings with property owners, with Able City as kind of a follow-up or separate. That would be very helpful and important, I think, as well as, I don't know if your economic subcontractor debtless group would also be available because those sorts of questions come up. And we really want everyone to not only feel comfortable, but realize the potential that exists, particularly those who are not familiar with Form-Based Codes.
As mentioned, the 30th and the 31st, we will be here on site. But if that doesn't work for the different property owners, then we can work on arranging meetings as necessary.
Robin?
So, I mean, I like the whole idea of walkability. However, I don't live in town, so, right. And I brought this up at the last meeting, but I don't feel it's been addressed, is the idea of where's my supermarket? And what, what kind of building, is that like a liner building with parking behind it? How are we going to guarantee there's still a supermarket in town?
I can't guarantee there's going to be a supermarket, but because the market is here, there will be one. This is just changing the underlying zoning, even within the vision. We didn't get, we didn't foresee the supermarket that exists moving. We foresaw it staying there and making sure that we were addressing parking for that as well. There are formats of buildings that are large format, flex buildings that would be allowed to be constructed new under the code if they chose to totally redevelop. But just like with any business, the code doesn't guarantee that they're going to stay or go. But this code does not outlaw them and it is not, even the vision and with the code, it's not foreseeing the grocery store that you do have leaving or relocating.
But again, when I look at the use table, there's no mention of a supermarket. The closest it comes is food and beverage, which doesn't sound like a grocery store to me.
Just under our code, a grocery store is retail sales. We don't differentiate between clothing store, grocery store, auto parts store. It's all considered retail. So retail would be allowed in the zone.
When Liz asked the question about how prescriptive the code might be, you had four images and three of them were quite different from one another. So can you explain how there's inherent flexibility within the code? It was the one that had, the top left photo looked very, that's at Florida, and then the others.
And as a note, we are working on switching out the images with palm trees in very Florida to be from New England and more local. I would say probably the, we're very, the Form-Based Code really talks a lot about form and the building placement. And part of that form is the shop front and making sure that you can see into the building. And again, that's where fenestration also comes out, but also looking at, you know, making sure that you're meeting ADA and so the door is set back so you can open your door in order to get in, but you're still creating that facade. I think there's still a lot that can be done, even with, you know, what is being prescribed for, you know, as an example, this shop front. And this is a part of a series of frontage types where it also talks about galleries and porches, depending on which zone that you're within.
And so that would all come under your, your description of we want interesting buildings, so that means a variety to a certain extent.
I'm a big fan of the Form-Based Code, but I, I want to go back to Susan's concern. I don't want to talk about it in terms of the build-to line because I totally agree with that. But if you think about Old Tower Hill Road and you think about the, the traffic pattern, particularly in the summer, and you look at the, the width of the sidewalks that you have, there's nothing walkable about it. And having interesting stores, and I love the illustration of Chipotle's, because Chipotle's now has, it's a slight setback and has a nice sitting area in front of it. And no one is going to eat there because it is the most unpleasant place to be because the traffic is very dense, the noise is terrible, the fumes are terrible. And it's, you just go into the building as fast as you can. So I mean, I, are we going to be thinking about, if it's going to be walkable, you've got to think about, are the sidewalks equipped to be walkable? And I think at the present time, your point was the sidewalks are just too narrow. So I'm not, I'm not adverse to the build-to line. I think the build-to line makes a ton of sense. But I'm concerned about having all of the feedback from community members. We're showing them pictures of streets that are walkable, but they don't have the traffic on them. If you took a picture of Old Tower Hill Road, and you, it wouldn't look like any of these streets. Yeah, yeah, I've seen, I've seen them out there and I've talked to them too.
You do? Yeah, I live in town. I drive by there every day and there's always people out in front. I can also attest to living in a, Mr. San Diego, some people call me. But it's very similar. This, this style is very prominent in San Diego and people just thrive on the sidewalk. This style is very prominent in San Diego and people just thrive on the sidewalks. Also spending some time in New Orleans, which I think is interesting, I want to bring up, is the overhang, especially because we get very crazy weather and we also have winters. The concept that I see isn't, there's an overhang there, but I don't know how much it's pushed throughout, but being able to have heat lamps then opens up the winter to be able to have when we have mild days in the winter, which is interesting, and that just doesn't really exist here right now, but it could if there was more overhangs. Anyways, I just wanted to share that with the committee as a thought here, is we struggle in the winter because it's very transitional, people leave, and a lot of places shut down, but if they were to open up and have this flexibility to have heat lamps outside, I don't know, it opens up some concepts, but anyways, that's all.
But my point was, is there, if there's a way to get developers into the same conversations with the people so that you can have, instead of, instead of, you know, testing, beta testing, as you say, with developers, I think it would be useful if we can integrate the conversations with the people so that you can, you can start hearing both sides simultaneously and the community can start understanding some of the concerns that other parties, other stakeholders here have, because I think it's really the input of all the different stakeholders that needs to bring this all together.
I think.
And I think the dialogue is a useful format or a better format for that than simply going from one faction to another.
But Gaper and Susan and Robin have brought up good points tonight, and again, it's about changing the mindset of what Old Tower Hill Road is, that it's not a vision for yesterday, it's a vision for not even today, but tomorrow. And what you want five, 10, 15, 20 years from now or even further, what do you want it to look like as time goes by? And one of the aspects, I think everyone in the room today could say, a four or five-foot sidewalk along two lanes of traffic with an interior turning lane with cars doing 35 to 40 miles per hour between lights, the perception is it's not safe. So how do we build a code that requires a developer to build the infrastructure within their property outside of the right-of-way to give you that comfort level? You could use Newport and America's Cup Way as an example, that cars are traveling between the Marriott and the Red Parrot and the post office at the same speed that they are on Old Tower Hill Road for comparison, yet that Newport experience feels much more walkable and some of it is size of sidewalks and just the creation of placemaking and building orientation, which in some aspects gets cars to slow down, but because there's a 10-plus foot wide sidewalk there, I'm not required to be within two or three feet of the car. I can walk internal to that site. So again, it's making sure the code represents some of the properties we have in town and how you can get that sense of place, even if it has to creep onto private property versus the public right-of-way.
And the comment you made about the winter made me think about Newport because Newport makes a much greater effort to get folks out and into spots in the wintertime. Some of the design aspects make it easier, but they do a much better job and that's something that this whole process and code would help. I'm also wondering, Pam, have you found that when you transition to a safer, more walkable area, does this modify the traffic situation at all?
Very often, it does. When you start to get those buildings, you know, you have the wide sidewalk, but bringing the buildings up to the street, once you get more of those, then in your periphery, there's more to see and there's more going on and you're trying to, it tends to slow drivers down. I know it is a state road. A lot of times, what people try to do is just slow down the speeds on the roads, but a town can only do that if they control the road. You can only slow it down so much, but by adding, even just having trees on each side of the road in alignment can create that visual that you need to slow down. There's things close to the road and you would much rather those be trees than people. And so, yes, behaviors can change, but it does take time and it does take, you know, kind of almost like that critical mass of development that has come in of the, you know, things implemented closer to the street for it to then take effect.
So the better design does essentially provide a traffic calming of sorts?
Yes.
But you did just mention street trees, and the picture in the top-right corner is lovely, but they've got the street, a row of trees, a row of sidewalk. Are we able to add in a landscape element into this code so that we do end up eventually with small rain gardens or stormwater structures or trees or something along that breaks up that highway feel from that sidewalk? Like right now, I think the way this is, is that we've got the roadway, the sidewalk in the building. Can we, without encroaching upon property owners' space to build, can we add in that part also? Like is that part of our, can we, are we allowed to do that too, without encroaching on property owners' rights to develop their property?
Why not make them put it in? Why do you want to not encroach on their rights? Because you've got to, it either has to come out of the road or it has to come out of the abutting properties. So why do you want it to come out of the abutting road?
I'm not sure where we're allowed to have it come out of, and that was my question. Sure, I'd love to have it come out of all the property owners' rights, but if you own a half an acre of land and you want to develop it, and now we're telling you, okay, well, you have to add in 10 feet of trees and a five-foot sidewalk, I don't know what we're allowed to do, what's reasonable for us to do, and that was my question. I think initially, one of the, in the first charrette, that was one of the trade-offs, so to speak, that the lot coverage is much greater, the height can be greater, and those are some of the things that are incorporated because of that benefit.
Anything else for anyone?
Yeah, I have a question about, I don't know, is there a depth, like a maximum depth that can be dug? Is that known?
I don't know the soils, so I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, because that's one of the questions you had about the shopping, right? So reference San Diego gangs, they have this going on. Two of the supermarkets, they dug below, so the parking is below the market, so when you pull up, you drive below and they have a conveyor belt that brings you up with your cart and brings you down. And there's two of these, is a Trader Joe's, actually there's three. Trader Joe's, a Whole Foods and a, our equivalent of Stop &amp; Shop is theirs is Ralph's, and there's a Ralph's like this. And they're in downtown, so they're in prominent areas and they're downtown and they dug below to make the parking. I don't know, again, like the water table, what the, I'm not architect or that language or whatnot, but that would be interesting to know because then you could dig down to build parking as well, which is an option rather than building up for parking, which I know that was one of the ideas that was presented. Another reference to San Diego, every business is forced to plant a jacaranda tree every 20 feet on the sidewalk and maintain that tree, and if that tree dies, it's their responsibility to replace it, and if they don't replace it within a certain timeframe, they are fined. And it makes downtown San Diego amazing because jacaranda trees bloom with this purple flower. It's absolutely stunning. So that's another example of that being in place. Another comment I had was, in terms of like chains, one ordinance that I've seen is that you can't have chains in these areas, so you're not like having it, these sidewalks filled. And we already have McDonald's and Burger King, so I guess there's not much we can do about that already, but rather than these places being forced to be more local businesses is something to consider. That way it just increases just economics locally and increases small business here rather than just chains gobbling up all the storefronts. I don't know if that was something that's been considered or even, it might be written in the document, I didn't read it, but that's my comment. Thank you.
Just from a regulatory standpoint, and Andy could weigh on this in addition, but we can't call out a particular entity as being allowed versus not being allowed, but there are some entities who have their corporate prototype, and if they're not allowed to build it and it doesn't fit this format, they may just choose not to build. So in essence, if 20 years ago, the town decided they didn't want drive-throughs and they held to that, you may have different types of restaurant space or the same restaurant space, but looking very different than it does today. So there are, there are still communities in New England who don't allow drive-throughs, yet they still have McDonald's, they still have Dunkin' Donuts, they just don't have drive-throughs, but the demand's still there, so the corporations come, they just change their model to the requirement of the community, but if in those communities, they would allow drive-throughs. I know one particular town, there would probably, four of the fast-food restaurants would have double drive-throughs, like everyone throughout the country is going through and retrofitting their sites to double, if not triple, drive-through lanes, again, to push more people through the small window of time they have. But again, you can create and craft a regulation that doesn't ban them, but just sets the stage for what you want them to be as a contributor to your community. So if you feel, you know, we'll say gas stations, you may not want to ban gas stations, but if you want gas stations, you may be able to say that you're limited to 200 square feet of canopy. So you have things that look more like the gas station on Main Street and less like a more modern gas station with five pump islands and a 1,200-square-foot canopy in front of the colonial-style retail store that you can't see because the canopy is so big. So you can write a code that steers them in a direction that this community would want, but you can't call out no fast food.
There are actually lots of examples of this happening around New England, and one of them, I think it's been 20 years, is the McDonald's in Freeport, Maine. So check that out, and there are other communities that have done the same, and quite interesting how well they fit in and how popular they've become.
And how much McDonald's hated it in the beginning, but I just wanted to say on behalf of the Economic Development Committee, that are the people we will be trying to bring to you, property owners, are going to be concerned about some things that are not in the code. They're going to be concerned about where their renters are going to go while they renovate, should they decide to renovate. They're going to want to know what will happen to their property values, should they do this kind of thing. So I know that when we bring them to the table with you, they're going to have some more economic, I mean, they will be interested, they will understand the economic opportunities that are offered here in terms of building up, building, covering more of the lot, they will understand that, but there is a transition and it would be helpful if we could see maybe in, I mean, I think I'll go look in Jamestown and see what's happened there, where property, what have property owners done while their properties were being converted, you know, some might have been torn down, some might just have been renovated, but that's going to be an important issue for the people we'll try to bring to this discussion. I'd just like to say, I have read the whole document, as you know. I found some diction issues, but I think it's, I think it's really, I think if people can kind of suspend their disbelief and think about the opportunities, I think it could be very exciting, but we need, we need a property owner or two to start so that we can begin to make the change.
We need the catalyst, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you for reading the whole document, too.
You're welcome. It's my job.
Other thoughts from folks?
There's a section about streets, and as we all know, in town, that intersection is actually pretty busy, and I wonder if there was any study done, like how many cars actually go through that intersection, and is there any opportunity in the planning phase to possibly like shunt some of those cars out of that four-way intersection? I don't know how you would do it, I'm not a planner myself, but the idea of like trying to take a family of four and crossing that particular intersection right now is terrifying. I would not want little kids, like holding them by the hand, trying to go across that. But again, if the state owns it, there's not much we can do, like maybe just like getting the number of cars through that intersection down somehow, forcing people to stay on one to go off other exits or something like that. Just wondering if there's any thought put to that.
I know when we did the initial charrette and report, we were looking at numbers. I know someone even looked, you know, would a roundabout at that intersection be possible, but where they're state roads, you are limited, but one of the things we were looking at is, you know, kind of three of the quadrants have an alternative if you wanted to, you know, take, you know, a right and a right to go around the intersection, but the northeast quadrant does not have that. And so as part of that, you know, we were looking at, you know, as people develop, could those street connections be put in in order to make more network, make it more connected? And so this plan is in the street types map, which is, you know, trying to say some of these streets are existing and maybe they can get changed and, but those are existing, but it's also showing where potential streets would ideally go. Ideally, these would connect more, but there's also some topography in that location, and so we don't think they can actually connect, but there are some ideas of how to at least give an opportunity to have that street connection so that people could choose to not go through that intersection, say if they were taking a right, there might be an alternative for them. But generally, people are going to stay on the main roads to get through where they're going.
Can I say something else, even though I just spoke? Okay, okay. Yes, you reminded me, I was concerned about the topography and the fact that FB4 is it, is the gateway, and it's that purple section there, and it's, it is sort of the, it's to be the signal that this area is changing, and yet it's up a steep hill, it's not as walkable, it seems quite, it's quite distant from Main Street, it's even distant from this very busy corner of Old Tower Hill Road and Kingston Road. So I was just wondering, I think there are a couple of drawings you have where you've done something at that intersection of Kingston Road and Old Tower Hill to kind of make it a gateway-like thing, but that's, that's something that, it's, I don't know what you do about it because of that steep slope, but anyway, I was concerned about the concept of the gateway being up a hill.
Is there an opportunity for like a town parking lot? If it's going to be a lot of walkability and kind of, it seems like you're trying to do more like the downtown feel, like I know Newport and everything like that has like a town parking lot where people can park if you're trying to create that kind of space up there. Just a thought.
I guess that's ultimately up to the town since the, right now, those parcels are privately owned, and so then the town would have to have a commitment to trying to acquire or have a public-private partnership to do that. Within the report and the ideas within the code is that there would be shared parking agreements between parcels that, you know, you could build structured parking, particularly on some of the larger lots in order to accommodate that, but I can't answer the question about a town-owned lot.
Yeah, it's tricky over here. Another note to mention was we, the bike path's an opportunity, and I know the bike path is part of that corridor towards the end, but being able to connect it to the main area, say like where the bank is, that's something that's considered. I know there's also been talks about connecting it through Commons and eventually all the way to Narragansett, which that would be a... way to Narragansett, which that would be a pretty natural path. I know it's a big ask, but it's something that I think to consider when we're talking about long-term vision, so the bike path's right there. And that would help alleviate some of the parking problems that exist, because you could park, say, at the school, at Sagatucket Park, and then roll in there if you wanted to. Comment could be, with the walkability issue for that, yeah, that intersection is not something I'd want to cross with my kids with, I agree with you 100%. And it would cost the town, but obviously walking bridge or tunnels are an option, I don't know how, the feasibility of building a tunnel probably doesn't make much sense, but a walking bridge, it would cost a lot, but it would help solve the problem. Yeah, or maybe teleporting, I don't know, something like that.
As part of the vision document, it does talk about the bike path and existing bike network and connecting within this area to make it better connected, but that's part of the vision, that's not part of the code. The bike connections are within the overall town document, not within the code.
Not within the code?
Not within the code.
Yeah, just for clarification, in the initial neighborhood study, it talks about the interrelationship between the bike path, wayfinding, place-making, and everything. This is codifying the development of this area to try and bring the vision forward. There are other documents in town that talk about wayfinding and improvements to Main Street and street scape improvements, and again, to what everyone's mentioned tonight, we're doing all of this, in essence, on state roads and state-controlled property, so we have to find the, find balance. There are mechanisms for traffic calming, those traffic commons or changes to that intersection may improve the pedestrian experience, but slightly increase the delay at the light. So if it, for example, took you 60 seconds to get through that light now, if you improve the pedestrians' conditions, it may not still take you 60 seconds, it may improve the pedestrian condition, but potentially affect the car. So there's, there are going to be trade-offs throughout the process. In a perfect world, you improve the pedestrian and you improve the level of service for the vehicle, all within the right of way, and there, you know, further analysis needs to be done to that intersection to see if that can be accomplished, whether a roundabout accomplishes that, or specific turning lanes, signalization. And I think a lot of it, too, is, it's very orocentric right now. Everybody can, you know, it's different than Main Street. So most people arriving here are coming here by car, there's little pedestrian movement, there's little street activation, so, Randy, you've mentioned places, you know, San Diego, I'm very familiar with the downtown, I've been there a few times. You have just as much traffic going through some of the parts of downtown that you have here, except your eye constantly makes you look right and left, so it slows you down because you need to realize there may be crossing people, there may be other things to look at, and that in itself becomes traffic calming, even though lane width and intersections are smaller. It's also one thing that's not here is, you know, one thing we've talked to Jason and Pam about at different occasions is, what is the future build-out of this where you may introduce a thousand unit? You know, we just use the number of a thousand residential units. What if there are a thousand residential units here, which means in the evening, there's street activation and just a different appearance to this area? How does that affect traffic? And again, some of it will be a stretch or an assumption based on historical data and experiences in other places. My example is Newport. You know, there's, you know, there's a different way you treat the road section between the Marriott, and we'll say the post office. If you turn down Thames by the Red Parrot, you instantly slow down. It's not necessarily because of road width, it's just because of things going on. There are parking spaces on the street versus no parking spaces on the street. You have to walk for people crossing not in crosswalks, because there aren't any on Thames, but there are on America's Cup. They separated that two-way traffic by a center median. That gives a pedestrian the ability to only have to cross two lanes of traffic, wait, and then cross two more, and then cross another section where there's parking and other aspects. So there's ways to break down the segments versus you having to cross 100 feet at once. And I think even people have stated for the intersection by CVS, if you hit the cross signal, it's all four ways. So if someone's in one of the crosswalks, it queues the other three lanes of traffic until, in essence, it's a four-way movement, even though someone's just crossing one width of traffic, or one leg of the four legs. So again, there are things we can do, there's introduction of safety zones between the medians, but this is a long process, and I think Pam alluded to it, and Maria used the term catalyst. This is one or two properties at a time, it's going to take creativity on a developer, younger or older and different to that, it's going to take, you know, someone with vision that can see the potential and starts with that catalyst. It's not all of a sudden redoing, you know, tire and lube store who already has a 20-year lease with two, five years on top of that, that's a 30-year property. It's not that property, it's something next to that.
And you know, in Newport, some of those cobblestone streets serve as a very good way to slow cars down.
Yeah.
But, you know, design and traffic calming and texture and sidewalk and all those things that are now utilized can work very well here.
Right. I mean, recently, I've been in Ithaca, New York, in the downtown, which pushes a lot of traffic there, but people slow down because of the buildings and the sidewalks and the structure of that environment. I was just in Ryde, New York, beautiful, too, one, you know, we DOT is resistant to raised crosswalks. Ryde, New York had a gorgeous one, they used a concrete kind of sidewalk element to be the transition zone to an entire cobblestone or granite inlay, smooth cobblestone, but granite inlay for their intersection, it was a three-way intersection. And then to protect the turning movements for people on the sidewalk, they added very period-like, the old hitching posts, to those sidewalks so that someone wouldn't cut the corner and hit a pedestrian, they would hit a bollard that looked like an old historic antique hitching post. So there are ways to do it, it'd be easier if the town owned, I don't know if it would be easier if the town owned it, because the town would have to seek funding for it, versus getting the state to cooperate, and they've done it elsewhere. So it's, you know, Mr. Manny has had conversations with leadership at Rhode Island Department of Transportation, they're willing to discuss, I don't know how willing they are to implement, so.
That we have, that I'd like, we didn't, if we didn't have, we have sidewalks because of the curb cuts and the sidewalks being right along the side of the road. Our curb cuts, the sidewalk goes down sharply for the curb cut and then comes up, or, no, that's what I want it to do, sorry. They currently, they slope for the car so the car can drive off the, off the road and into the driveway. Am I making any sense? So the, what?
A little bit.
Okay, so you're walking on a sidewalk, and there's a curb cut, and the curb cut comes right out to the road, so somehow the car has to be able to go, it has to be able to go from the road up over the sidewalk to the driveway. Ours currently slant the sidewalk as opposed to, so that you tip into the road. I don't know how to talk about this, but I don't like it. It's terrible to walk on, it's bad if you're in a wheelchair. And there is one place in this document where it looks like it would exist, I don't remember what page it's on, but I think all you have to do is have the sidewalk come along and then just gently go down to the level of the cutaway and then go up, but you can tell I'm not a sidewalk engineer. Anyway, that's just a footnote for what I'd like to see happen in the future.
So I have another question. I'm looking at the, this drawing that you have here, and we originally talked about Tower Hill Road and the location that we were hoping to address, and it looks like this document has expanded your focus area pretty far to the west, like down our Main Street and incorporating a bunch of neighborhoods there. And I wonder about the evolution, I, maybe I just missed something, but I thought we were focused primarily on this area that you're showing here, but this is pretty significantly further to the west and incorporating some of residential neighborhoods.
Main Street was always part of the study area as well. Within that area and within the way the code is written, it is not trying to change a lot of what was there, people liked what was happening along Main Street, there, I think they had some issues with like signage, and some of the bigger buildings that came in weren't in keeping with kind of that, you know, house that's been turned into commercial feel. And so that wasn't really able to be illustrated within this illustrative plan, but the Main Street was part of the study area, it was part of the discussion, and that area that's included within the form-based code, the intent of that area is to keep that feel of houses that are a little bit further setback from the street that have then been converted into commercial. It is a different feel than this area, and so that's why that was also included.
Thank you. You've got some areas here that are residential now, and that's, sorry, I don't have my glasses on. It is FB1 residential neighborhood, which is an R10, but it seems that all of the setbacks have been shortened, and for some of them, I mean, for that R10 neighborhood, the backyard setback goes from 30 feet down to 12. And I don't know, I can't speak for the neighbors and all the folks that live in those neighborhoods, but I don't think that's going to go over very well, to have some big old building now 10 feet off your property line, the side yard setbacks are smaller, like, everything seems to be changing in this residential neighborhood that we haven't even had, I don't think we've even had conversations about those potentially significant changes to what is now just an R10 residential neighborhood. So I guess I don't know how, I, I'm sorry, if we were talking about the Oak Street neighborhood or all that going right over to School Street, then that, I missed it, but I didn't realize that that was part of your study area. So I- I'm looking, I'm looking at page five.
Yes, if you could-
I have a printout of page five.
It's the, I think it's FB2, it's sort of a darker beige, and that area, I think we need to take care with, with the specifications, because as Susan said, not only does that should be a smooth, not abrupt transition to Main Street, but you have a lot of existing businesses and houses that sometimes have residential as well, and you wouldn't want to significantly change the character dramatically in that area.
I understand that you were studying the Main Street stretch along there with the historic houses, but I think that it would be a darn shame if those historic houses were torn down for something else, especially if we can't control a more new-fangled look coming in, like, we've got a new, we've got a business down on Main Street that renovated a few years ago and completely changed the look of Main Street, that one business. And so I think that we should be careful not to give too much leeway if we don't want that look extended throughout the neighborhood. I'm sorry, or maybe we do want that look extended throughout the neighborhood, you know, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, but I guess we just, I think, need to be careful of what look we're asking for along that historic stretch of Main Street. But I'm not trying to criticize anybody's look, because, you know, everyone's got their own taste.
So again, as we go through this, working with our consultant, we're trying to balance those areas in the four different districts, being FB1, FB2, FB3, FB4, and be cognizant of what's there, but some of the things you've said tonight, that, yeah, those old, used to be single-family homes and now they're businesses, that changed the character of the single-family neighborhood that it used to be, so over time, that has changed. This generation is used to that change because they weren't there potentially when it was all single-family homes. It is intended to be a transitional period, the yellow to the north of Main Street and to the south of Main Street, the majority of the northern part of Main Street that's yellow is developed in single-family nature, it's a transitional zone, as if it was ever to transition, to act for, as a buffer between that area and the dark brown on Holly Street. And then to Pam's point earlier, all of this area was in the initial study area. We went all the way to the intersection with Stedman's and just beyond that, and the bike shop, and then north, because one of the concerns we had is you just can't look at the frontage on Main Street, Old Tower Hill and Kingston Road, because you'd be falling short of what is just behind those properties, and this is trying to incorporate all of those. There is nothing in our zoning code right now that protects any one of those existing homes on Main Street or businesses on Main Street. They're not in the historic district, there are no architectural code that are regulatory within the town. We do our best, if there's a transitional building that's coming before the planning board or the planning department or zoning, to have discussions with developers to make it fit in the neighborhood, but there are buildings that have been transitioned in the last 10 years that, to your point, so I, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, but have transitioned outside of what has been the vernacular for architecture along that street. Just south of Stedman's, you mentioned another building further down on Main Street, but again, someone built those, populated those transitional buildings, and that was what they wanted to do as far as a look. The question is, is this document attempts to steer them at least in some direction of what may or may not be acceptable. One thing we've talked to our consultant about is potentially in an appendix to have some things that are photo representative of what is not acceptable. Liz made a comment earlier on a very specific facade treatment, top, middle, bottom, and it kind of pointed to a cornice, pointed to the top window treatment, pointed to a bottom element between the middle and the bottom. And some of the discussions we've had with our consultant is, if you don't show things like that, there will be a developer who says, I bent aluminum on the top of the building, and that's my top architectural element, and alls it is is a bent piece of aluminum flashing. But they'll say, I have added a top element to my building. I have dealt with developers who said, when there's a, there's a difference between the first floor and the second floor, they'll literally have one pinstriping line that says, that is my architectural feature between the first floor and the second floor. If you don't particularly call out the amount of window placement or windows on the second and third floor, you could get a corporate entity who has a brand identity, who adheres to your first-floor street front, and then the second floor has no windows and the third floor has no windows. Is that the look you're going for? You may, some may say, I'm okay with that, and others may say, that's not the look we're going for. So we're trying to, given feedback from the community, articulate the vision so that when the discussions held with the developer, they're steered in a direction that the community has already kind of blessed and approved for an appearance to a transition.
But Jamie, my question is, do we have any way to enforce that?
As Pam mentioned, it's in the code, and those would be requirements. We want to leave some flexibility, so it doesn't have to be exactly six windows, and they don't have to be exactly four-over-fours or two-over-fours, that they don't have to be, you know, 42 by, or 36 by 42 or 48, that there's some, and Liz, you talk about, it's okay to be a little bit different, right? There, I've used the term before, it's a historic, it's a modern interpretation of a historic vernacular. There's an eclectic nature to the mix of buildings along Main Street and in town. There's also a push away from- There's also a push away from that in some of the more modern buildings. We can use a building like the former Cube Smart, I know it's changed names, but I'll know it as Cube Smart. If you take that building, there will be a smart attorney working for a developer who says, "That building meets the Form-Based Code. I built it to the street line, I changed the roof line, I have horizontal and vertical relief, and I meet the dimensional building blocks of a Form-Based Code." I think the community would be upset if a building like that was built on Main Street because it met the shapes of the shoebox. What we're saying is, we want a little bit of say of what the outside of the shoebox looks like, and we don't want someone to say, "A building nondescript of architectural features that meets the shoebox dimensions is code compliant." So one thing we've talked just recently, in the last week, about, do we have an appendix that potentially says, you know, if we have an example of that facade, that this is acceptable. Here's Building A, Building B's acceptable, but Building C is an example of what we would not deem acceptable. And that's not a decision that Jamie Rabbit makes, or I got Jay Parker behind me and Brian's over there, that we make as a department. It's articulated in the code, and there's some flexibility. But it gives us the ability, when a developer puts a set of plans on, "Hey, I built this building in another community in Rhode Island, can I build it here?" We can go to this document and say, "The code kind of steers you away from that, but we can say yes if you do the following changes. And here's an example of how those changes could work on your building." So it's giving, Pam had, I think it's eight things that a Form-Based Code tries to do in one of her beginning slides. I think there were eight items. I may be off by one. But one of the things it's trying to do is, a Form-Based Code tries to give certainty to the development community, that if I head down this path, if I enter into this development scenario, if I tear down and rebuild, that if I submit a plan that meets the code, I have certainty in approval, sorry, five items. And it, item number one is, provides clear predictable rules. And that's what the code's trying to do, to leave a little, as little up to interpretation so there's, if someone takes on a multimillion-dollar project and spends hundreds of thousands of dollars in design and development, that there's some certainty on the backside of that application process, so long as they adhere to the code.
I guess my concern is, I agree with that, I agree with guidelines. I don't want to see our codes written in such a way that they are inflexible and we end up with cookie cutter. Because I think that would be as much of a mistake as if there were very lax codes and developers could do whatever they want. There's some moderation in there, and I just want to be certain that we're giving that amount of flexibility.
And I think we're cognizant of that, and those are some of the discussions Pam had, simply on that Build 2 line, that if you just had a hard Build 2 line when you drove down Old Tower Hill Road, you know, maybe someday you'd feel like you're in a tunnel because everything's at the street, everything's three stories tall, and everything looks the same, versus one building's at that Build 2 line, another one's setback 15, 20 feet, has a front dining area, a front lawn, there's some space, but it's still inviting to look. But we're not, from my perspective, it's not a code to try and replicate Main Street on Disneyland, at Disney World or Disneyland. It's giving the developer that flexibility, but steering him in a direction that makes it south Kingstown and not somewhere else.
And Jamie, nevertheless, as soon as we get east of Kingstown Road and we get into that Main Street area, I think we need to take care, because although under our current zoning, it's CD, commercial downtown, it really has the look and feel of CN. And I think we need to just proceed carefully with that portion.
Local again, Maria?
Oh, CN is commercial neighborhood, CD is commercial downtown, like you see on Main Street.
You said east of Main Street?
West.
Well, okay.
You know what I meant.
So you're saying from Stedman's into town?
Yes, as we get into Main Street, yes.
And I think what you...
Where the tan is...
And again, this is the first foray for the community into the Form-Based Code. I worked in another community where their Form-Based Code was very downtown-specific, it didn't expand beyond the downtown, it really fit for downtown. But this is something that I think, over time, if it's amenable to the community, that you could see the Form-Based Code potentially expanded onto Main Street. As properties become available and there's a transition on Main Street, we don't have the regulations in place that steer developers to replicate what's there or a modern interpretation of that. It's open to interpretation right now, there are no architectural standards. So as properties transition over time on Main Street, I think the Form-Based Code may have a place there. I'm not saying we're headed there today, but I think as people become familiar with this, if you get positive feedback, Main Street may be something the community wants to look at in the future.
You know, and a thoughtful touch to this particular area, this beige and yellow on the western side will be also important for community support at this point in time.
Can you use the mic so that...
In the administration section, you have the five or so points about what, how it works, how you get approval. And I wonder if that would just be interesting to show, that you have a pre-consultation period with the, with the planning department, and then you go through, it's so nice and simple, that I think it might address some, you know, it speaks a little bit to Liz's concerns, so I just thought maybe you want to mention that.
Yeah, there's a lot of text there, and I don't know if you can create a flow chart just to get people...
That's a very simple, I made a flow chart, that's a very simple little flow chart.
Amy, Andy, and Peter haven't gotten a hold of this yet, but we still have to be consistent with Rhode Island law, and we were, Jay, Brian, and I were talking about this actually today, that we, we want to simplify and be as clear with predictable outcomes as we can. We still have to be beholden to Rhode Island's land use law with regards to a potential pre-application meeting, a master plan, a preliminary, and a final, where in a perfect world, we'll one-stop shopping, it's certainty, it's here we go, you know, we're coming in, you got a code-compliant plan, when can I get my building permit? So we have to work through that with legal and see how simplified we can be. But we were talking about, if we follow Rhode Island law right now, someone under law could ask for a pre-application, or all of a sudden submit a application for master plan approval. If you look at existing regulations in Rhode Island law at master plan, they don't have to show you stormwater treatment, they don't have to show you topography, they don't have to show you building architecture, they just show you rectangles on a box, on a piece of paper, on a site, with maybe some parking. And when, if you ask for that at master, they would say, "Well, let's do it preliminary." So we have to work through some of that to see if we have the flexibility to get some of the product delivery earlier on in a cooperative manner, to streamline the process for the applicant, so it doesn't take a year or two.
Okay, yeah, I think that, I had forgotten that, about Rhode Island law, but I like the simplicity of this very much, and I hope you can keep some of that there, because I think that will help make people willing to go through this process, because currently, you know, who wants to go through this process the way it is now? It's pretty gruesome.
And I'm not saying Orsillo's office being, you know, being represented with Mike Orsillo, Andy, Peter, or Amy, that they're going to say to us that, "You don't want to do this, they need to keep us legally compliant." So we're going to try and work within Rhode Island law to simplify the process to the best of our ability.
Good, thanks.
Yes.
So I'm going to ask, I think, almost the same question I asked you a little while ago. I'm still concerned about this R-10 residential neighborhood over to the west of, you know, of Dale Carlia Corner, and the setbacks are all changed, they're all smaller. Can I just buy a lot and build a big house closer to lot lines? Because now this area has, we've slashed their setbacks, or does this prescribe that I need to use that property in some other method than a single-family house, since it's R-10? Like, are you just making the lot lines tighter? Or is there also a prescription for some other thing that's not just a single-family house in that area? I'm just trying to understand. Again, I'm in that whole residential neighborhood, west of the corner, yellow area.
There are more uses than just a single-family house that could go in that area, but it is very limited. It is trying to keep it more residential, and so you would be able to build, you know, a single-family house, or a townhouse, or a duplex within that area.
But I guess I wonder why slashing the setbacks is of, and you're still building a single-family house, how that's beneficial to our vision for what we want? So now the houses are closer to the street, or they're bigger, or they're closer to the neighbors, how does that further our vision of what we're trying to accomplish, except it's going to upset a whole lot of neighbors? So I wonder what the benefit of that moving of setbacks will be for the community who lives in that whole Oak Street neighborhood over there?
I very much wanted to swing back to that comment. I think that it's very unfair to do to those property owners.
I think that's something that we can look into and see, you know, is it, we did look at some of those properties that were adjacent, but like Jamie said, some of the ones we were looking at have already redeveloped, and so looking to see, are those the right boundaries for FB1 or not?
Thank you, and then I have one more question. I was surprised if, I think our vision is to eliminate the parking that's close to the road and sort of tuck it back behind buildings, but it looks like I can build a parking lot fairly close to the road if I put a nice fence up. And I think that, to me, felt a little counter to what we were trying to do, that we have parking lot setbacks that are almost right on the side street and then setback from the Main Street, but then needs to have a fence out front, which means I could basically keep the parking lot designs we have on Tower Hill Road now and just, like, why is this, if you're looking for that streetscape that you've been showing us, and then you're walking along and you're looking in the windows, and then there's a 75-foot expansive fence because there's a parking lot there, you've lost your continuity that I thought we were trying to gain, which, by allowing parking right up on the street front.
There's also a minimum frontage requirement, so that that does not happen. And that says that your front property line that's towards the street, a certain amount of that frontage must be built with building, so that you're not getting a, just a parking lot in there. And the parking area setbacks are further setback from what the building setbacks are. So that that's, like you said, it's putting the building closer to the street, it's putting the parking behind it.
But some of the sketches that you have for the, on the parking lot pages, show the street front, and then an M setback, which is 30 feet, and then a parking lot. Am I not understanding this?
No, you're seeing, that is what you're seeing, but it goes in conjunction with, let me go back one more.
I'm on page 11.
Yep. It goes in conjunction with the first diagram under building form, and so that was trying to show the, so I guess on page 10, showing where the Build 2 zone is, where the, you have the ability to build your building. That goes with the parking diagram. We separated them so that, in an effort to make it less confusing, because you had a lot of dots and you had a lot of lines on the single diagram, but the parking area, the setback, is further than what the building, the Build 2 zone is in the first diagram. And within that first diagram, there's also the frontage build-out that says that a certain amount of your property frontage must be building.
So in that white, so on the parking lot picture, that white strip on the south part, theoretically, there's a building?
Yes.
Not just landscaping?
Not just open space.
Okay, I didn't understand that, thank you.
And I've heard that before, so I'm going to try and think about maybe how we can do these a little differently, that it is better understood that the building is in front of that. Like I said, we used to have them as a single diagram, and that caused confusion, so we separated them, but that's also causing confusion, so we'll see what we can do to bridge that gap.
And Susan, you may have a scenario, and one of the things, that the front setback is 30 feet, so it's actually has to be behind where the building would front on. So just understand that, there may be a scenario where you have a building that has the ability to do one row of parking on the side with a one-way in and a one-way out with more parking behind it. So it gives a little bit of flexibility there, but it does not set it up so that parking can be between the front of the building and the street. Park, yeah.
Like this, sorry, this looks like my building's here, and then next door to that, I have my parking lot, and there's just a fence.
You cannot have a freestanding parking lot on a separate lot.
Right, but if the lot is, if you do right and left, you've got the building on one side and the parking lot on the other.
You're still, the controlling factor is the amount of building you need to have along your frontage.
Right, I didn't understand from this, that there was a building in that white spot as opposed to landscaping or fences or something. I get it.
And sometimes we have to think about worst-case scenarios in order to get where we actually want to be with regulations. Anything else before we move to the next agenda item? Anyone? Go ahead.
I have a suggestion for continuity, is just, right now, there is a tree forced for FB1. I think looking at having trees for all the zones, and then enforcing, you know, a native tree, like an American beech that holds its leaves all year, would really create continuity. Because they turn brown in the winter, and then they stay on the tree, right? So they become this goldish color in the winter, for example. So it'd create this continuity as you go down, it would all feel, even if it was a tree in front of a gas station, you're going to continue to see these trees, so it would bring it together. Another concept, which somebody's bringing up, signage. We could be more strict with signage and could implement a font or a color, or it have to be engraved, or something like that. And between like signage and trees, it would all start to feel like a cohesive something together, which would really help bring things together in a cheap way, and it's nature, which is cool.
Those are great suggestions. Just so you know, there's a disease amongst beech trees right now, so people aren't planting them, and really, it's just the random oak trees that sometimes hang on to their leaves, so, but you can also...
Yeah, like white oaks, right.
...hand landscaping with conifers, as well as deciduous tree trees. There's a lot that can be done, so.
Yeah, the American hollies.
Yep, that's a great one. Anything else?
Maria, I'm just going to ask quickly, I turned to Jay to see if he had anything, or Brian. Jay was shaking his head no. Andy?
No, not at this time.
Thank you.
I'd just say that, we're very much in support of this, so, you know, what we're looking for is how can we help speed up the process for land developers, get the developers excited, and generally also excite the public, I think is important. So once it starts to get further, educating them, to show them how it is an exciting thing. So EDC's in full support, and we're here to help, so just want to state that.
Excellent, thank you. And we've just got under three weeks before this workshop, so spread the word, please. Talk to your friends and neighbors.
Yes.
Mic? Use the mic so everyone can hear you.
Who's doing this thing that the EDC gave to Pam?
Again, we will...
You had mentioned a trifold that was developed...
This is the trifold.
We will be, the planning department will be responsible for distribution of that, we'll put that around town, we'll give, if you want 40, can you tell me how many copies you want, Susan, to circulate? We will supply them to you.
Great.
So we need your help in distributing these to the community also, but, you know, again...
Well, when you do the list of all the property owners...
We will include that.
Then you can just send them all this, because that's what we would do. Only you have the budget and we don't.
Lots to do on a short period of time, but we can get there. All right, thank you, folks, for coming. Feel free to stay if you wish. Feel free to stay if you wish. Our next agenda item is a discussion of cottage zoning. As folks know, the cottage zoning regs had a sunset clause built into them so that we could reevaluate them. I think we should chat about that, and also, we'd want to find out from Andy, do those regulations still have the authority that we intended, given some of the changes to A literal seat at the table. Are they still valid? Are they still enforceable, given changes to state law?
Well, I think you know my answer to that. It's yes and no. A lot of it is still enforceable.
Okay.
The state law changes, I don't know that, you know, the big one, the whole idea, because they're on small property and whatnot, I think, I don't think the ADU issues would apply to them, so I don't think that would have changed it at all. So I don't think the cottage zoning regulations are invalid anymore. The question are, are they irrelevant?
Yep, and primarily because they're on one lot, so to speak, so...
Right, right. I mean, someone can come in and do a comprehensive permit with the 25% affordable, which is not that much more than we might otherwise have them with the inclusionary zoning, and then they can ask for relief from all sorts of the requirements, including those cottage zoning things. Those are meant to incentivize that kind of development, and I think it's probably been superseded.
So changing the percentage of affordable units would not necessarily help to interest developers in doing this kind of a project?
That's my opinion.
Yeah.
I mean, if you want to make it, if you want to incentivize it, make it as of right, and remove the planning board review.
Which essentially is already being removed, 10 lots regardless.
Yeah, so...
Jamie?
So again, from my perspective, I believe I testified the last time that I wasn't necessarily in favor of the sunset, because we would be in this scenario, and having the regulation in place gives us another tool in our toolbox when we have conversations with developers who may be contemplating conventional subdivisions, to look at the cottage regulations, and they may not adhere to every component of it, but it gets them to think about an alternative to the conventional, you know, one lot, one acre, one lot, cul-de-sac, and back out again, surrounded by open space, where it potentially allows them to do a little more density, even if it is a comp permit. I would agree with Andy, if you really wanted to push someone hard and fast at the cottage regulations, you really have to incentivize it, and it wouldn't be, you know, requiring 30% versus 25, because if you did that, they'd comp permit you. It would be actually reducing the amount of affordable, or streamlining the permitting process to Andy's point of saying, hey, can we just do this as of right, so long as we check all the boxes and adhere to all of the design standards? That would potentially incentivize it. The other aspect is it's currently, not currently, but it was proposed to only be allowed in the R-10, R-20. I know there's probably some interest in the Affordable Housing Collaborative of expanding it to additional residential zones, and to, I think, Andy's point, or Maria, to your point, if someone could figure out how to do a 10-lot subdivision in the cottage zoning way, it'll be as of right, and it may be as of right at some point in time, so do you want to get ahead of that? Is it appropriate potentially to allow cottage-style development in the R-30 or R-40 zone in the community? And if you look at the R-40 zone, a lot of people say, well, that opens up a lot of land. Well, it opens up a lot of land, but it opens up a lot of land that's already been developed. So if you look at our R-40 zones, they're heavily developed in this community, they're, if you look at some of the big parcels that are in the R-40, there's a reason they haven't been developed, they're heavily environmentally constrained, and not readily developable. That's why they're out parcels, it kind of outlayers to that. But it may give you some success on some outlying properties. We cannot predict the pushback from an established neighborhood with a vacant, you know, two-acre lot where someone proposes to do eight, nine, 10 houses in an R-30 or R-40 zone. We did have a developer who was interested in the cottage regulations on Columbia Street, but when there was pushback from the neighborhood, which he said he was, appeared to have planning board support, therefore, he was unwilling to go through the permitting process with an uncertain outcome, even if he adhered to all of the dimensional requirements of the cottage zones. I think, you know, Pam, again, used it in that five-point slide with the Form-Based Code, if you can provide some certainty to the outcome of the permitting process, I think there's a higher likelihood that a developer will utilize the cottage zoning regulations.
Do I remember that it needs to be sewer and water? And that might limit our real estate for where you could actually do it anyway?
It could, again, these developments have been built around New England and the country without municipal sewer and without municipal water. Our regulations steered it towards sewer and water, yes.
So when these were first developed, and similar types of cottage projects around the country, the idea was that they were in areas where they were walkable to goods and service, there was a certain amount of design inherent in them, and they were also ideal for someone downsizing from the three- or four-bedroom home. And that need still exists, that desire still exists, so how can we make it, I think, more widely known, and, again, you just need that first person to do one of these, but how can we continue to try to move forward in this direction without it becoming either so watered down that it's meaningless to the original intent? Let alone the fact that, you know, when you talk about neighborhood concerns, as soon as people find out that you can have up to 10 lots, and it's going to be no planning board review, administrative officer, no notice, there will definitely be some reaction, and how can we preserve this or move forward with this, you know, with any degree of, I hate to say certainty, because it feels like we kind of don't have that.
I think the low-hanging fruit right now is that you were comfortable with the regulation before, as it existed, it sunsetted in March. I think asking the town council to readopt it or reinstitute it in the present form, and then the planning board could put it on another agenda to discuss potential expansion into the R-30 or R-40. You know, we've had developers looking at R-80 properties of potentially doing cottage, but they would be required to comp permit you, and potentially, you know, if they comp permit you, they don't have to adhere to the code.
Right, it makes it, yeah, exactly.
But having the regulation in existence gives us something to aspire to. So if we're, we'll look at Broad Rock, for example, we have a recent development on Broad Rock, which was inclusionary zoning. The only, we had conversations early on with that developer about doing a cottage-type development, not allowed in the zone, but he would have had to do a comprehensive permit. They didn't want to do a comprehensive permit, so they chose inclusionary zoning. If it was potentially one of the development options in that zone, they may have chosen to do a cottage zone, even though it's not a right, it's an allowed development pattern. They may have chosen a different type of development pattern versus the standard 19 lot with a cul-de-sac at the end, which is the pattern they did, and the planning board and the department worked on, making it, we'll say, more cottage-like, because we did have the regulations in effect, and they liked that development pattern. But I think the first thing is to get it back on the books in the R-10, R-20, but I think it warrants serious consideration to be in the R-30, R-40, or another zone. And again, you could make a recommendation to the council to explore, and it would be up to the council to potentially put it in the R-30, R-40, or even R-80 zones.
So Jamie, I have a question. Do we need to include it in the R-30 and R-40 by right, or is there a way to do it almost like a special-use permit, where you have some discretion as to where it's appropriate? Like, not necessarily the board, but, like, is there, is there a system where, because you know some places it's less appropriate than others? Is there any discretion, like a special use for that, that we could do?
I think the difficulty is, is in that discussion, that provides zero certainty to the development community, because a special-use permit is not something that's guaranteed, it can be denied because it doesn't meet, someone's going to argue immediately that special-use permit application is supposed to be of like-kind and quality to the neighborhood it's being developed in. The very nature of the fact of the cottage regulation in a density of eight units per acre is going to be in conflict with an R-40 zone, right? If it's a special-use permit, versus saying that, we're okay with this development pattern, we're okay with eight units an acre, we want to encourage housing in the community, and it, it could or may or could not have any effect on a neighbor. I mean, you've said on the board long enough that two-lot subdivisions are viewed to have significant impact on a neighbor who lived next to a vacant lot, who cut down every tree and every lick of landscaping right up to their property line, and then wanted to know when the new developer was going to plant a landscape buffer up against their property, because they clear-cut theirs. Yet, they were next to a vacant undeveloped lot that at some point in time would be developed. Those are hard conversations to have with people, but I think if you're comfortable with the cottage vernacular, it may be open to discussion of expanding it into the R-30, R-40 zone at this time.
So, go ahead.
Do you think it was too constrained by just requiring a single family? I mean, what if we had opened it up to two or three families, but still tried to design it in that cottage-type concept, where you still had a central courthouse, et cetera? You think that there'd be any interest there?
I think, you know, knowing the development community, if you can do a duplex, it saves you, you know, two exterior walls, you know, nine windows, 10 windows, you know, $1,500 a window opening, so there is some cost savings to it. There's a little bit of additional infrastructure savings. I think when you start, if you look at the traditional village concept developed nationally, it's really on the single-family cottage, 1,600 to 2,200 square foot footprint. I think if you're looking at a model of a duplex, Joe, you got to have some limitations on the size of the duplex that.
And that would be fine, because we have some sizes on the single-family as well. I guess my thought is, is that when we extend into the R-30 and the R-40, and we start looking at areas that don't have the infrastructure, we almost have to look at what the density is at two different levels for those that have infrastructure and those that don't. If you're looking at eight units plus two incentive units, 10 units an acre, which I think our cottage zoning allows, that's 4,000-square-foot lot. You can't get a 4,000-square-foot lot and need water and sewer. Your water's too close to your sewer, you don't have enough room for sewers. Now, if you start opening it up to potentially a duplex or a threeplex, which is still designed around this cottage-type concept, now your houses could be a little more concentrated, leave a little more open space for that type of, you know, water and ISDS or whatever. But I do think that if we, so originally, we put that together, we were looking at R-10 and R-20 with infrastructure, and as I had said before, the missing middle, I think we're too restrictive for this town as far as infrastructure requirements and our density. But if we are going to extend it to that, in areas that don't have infrastructure, then we might have to look at reducing the density.
Again, you could simply make a recommendation, it's eight units per acre on sewer and water, that you go to, we'll just say, six units, if you're, maximum of six units per acre if you're not on sewer and water. And you take those, we'll say, almost 3,000, 4,000 square feet of footprint away, that gives you more room for sewer and water.
I think, and I think we have a lot of locations, or at least some locations, that have water but don't have, don't have sewer. I will say that I have seen some nice developments with two- and three-family structures that very much look like a kind of a cottage community in our areas of the, you know, country, so...
Take photos, bring them to the meeting. How can we think about incentivizing or developing a mechanism that steers people towards something like this, rather than going the comp permit route? Why, why have some, very few now, but some of these projects chosen to do inclusionary zoning versus the comp permit?
Be, and again, I have Jay and Brian here, who can correct me, but under the comprehensive permit, you have to do 25% of your units affordable. Under incentive zoning, you, when you're said and done, you hover.
Between 14 and 17, or something like that.
Brian's behind me. We end up around 15, 18% affordable, Brian? In an inclusionary?
Yeah, I would say right around 14 to 16%, depending on how the math works out.
So they're making a decision to be code-compliant and have to build less affordable units versus needing the flexibility on their development where they build the actual 25%. So in some aspects, some developers are developers to build communities and build sense of place, and there are other developers who are financially driven, it's an economic decision, and it's a return, ROI, return on investment. And I'm not faulting either track that the developers take. Developers are in the business of building homes or building commercial properties, in most instances, for profit, they're not there to lose money. We're trying to steer them in a direction where they are satisfied with the development scenario, they're able to have a return on investment, and the community potentially gets a product they're looking for. One of the aspects we could explore is, thank you, Pam, is, to Joe's point, how do you get someone to potentially, you know, go all-in on this? If you had a predetermined development pattern with pre-approved housing types, that has worked in some communities, so if you're going to do a cottage development, it's almost permitted use as of right, you pick one of, you pick these six predetermined housing products that are acceptable to the community, you deliver those, you deliver the specific development pattern that's already predetermined to be acceptable, and you plug and play. And in some communities, that's become extremely attractive, there are communities for accessory dwelling units who have pre-approved packages, and you don't have to go to planning, you don't have to go to zoning, you go to the building department, pick the plan off the shelf, already architecturally designed.
Like those books at Home Depot?
It's a little, the Sears &amp; Roebuck model, where you're picking a pre-designed house in it, and then it's just vetted for placement on the lot, sewer, water, parking, access, but the house is already pre-approved. So again, some communities... So again, some communities are moving to that model. But that's predetermining outcome and predetermining a release of control by a board of commission.
And site conditions.
Can I comment?
And site conditions.
So if you take a private road with a one-acre lot and now change everybody on that road's life by putting a bunch of cottages and a bunch of traffic on that road, that is unbelievably unfair to the property owners. And South Kingston, I think, has a lot of that type of private road.
Again, you can create provisions where this type of development as of right is allowed on a public street and not a private shared driveway scenario. Again, you are the reg... Oh, I should say. The town council is the controlling regulatory agency with regards to changes in adoption of new regulations. The planning board gives guidance to the town council. So if there's a scenario that is acceptable to the planning board, bring that forward to the council. If they think there's an alternative, they may suggest changes. But I think it's important to potentially put the cottage regulations back on the books at a minimum in the existing zones it has. But, you know, we supported it being in the R-30 and R-40 zone when originally contemplated. It just got changed to R-10 and R-20.
Well, certainly, I think the board supports a continuation of the existing ordinance, yes?
Well, not if it's going to say R-40, no.
Well, that would be a change.
Jamie just said it initially, talked of R-30 and R-40, so.
That would be a modification, so.
Yep. So again, my initial recommendation is, at a minimum, make a recommendation to council to reinstitute the cottage regulations as they were previously written. I think it warrants exploration of expanding it to R-30, R-40, or other zones in town. And then you can further explore the permitting mechanism, as you discussed tonight, permitted as of right. How do we, you know, make it more attractive to a developer to choose this development pattern that has been deemed acceptable by the council and the planning board as kind of regulatory entities? And how do you move that forward?
I was just going to suggest if we are at some future date going to consider changes. In answer to your question about incentivization, maybe an option is to reduce the inclusionary zoning requirement on cottage development in return for getting smallay affordable, smaller dwellings that may not rise to the same level of market prices that we have around town. And also, hopefully, simply by adding numbers and density to accumulate some of that housing to fill that entry-level housing gap or the retirement downsizing gap that we're missing right now.
Exactly. That makes a lot of sense. And as Jamie said, it really is about reducing the inclusionary zoning, yeah. So can we send a letter to the council and say that we support continuation of this, but want to spend some time looking at other?
How about just a recommendation that they reenact it? You don't have to...
Tell them what we're going to do next?
Yes, just suggest they reenact it without the subset provision. And then you can do whatever you want in the future anyway with future recommendations.
Mike?
Just a suggestion. I'm not sure if any member of the council, present council, was on when this was originally passed. Some level of context would be helpful for what led the planning board to recommend it in the first place, why it was sunset. And then I'm gathering from the discussion that some of the legislative changes that have been made by the assembly have impacted that even if it hadn't sunset. So it would be helpful to me, anyway, to understand what those changes are, what we as a town are allowed to do, and what the legislature has said you cannot do. Just a suggestion.
Mike, thank you for that. I think that's important to hear that from at least one council member, reminding us that not everyone was there in the beginning. So that when, if you make a motion tonight to make a recommendation for staff to have the town manager recommend this, to go to council, we'll include all that in a memo to Mr. Manny that ultimately goes to the council. There's a whole process associated with order of notice and public hearings, and we can get that information to the council in an appropriate manner.
The other thing that would be helpful, that can't really be contained in a memo, is, and I believe we have it in our library, I have the book at home. It's the... It's one of the books that showed different, across the country, smaller houses and really good design. It's, I can't remember what it's called.
Not such small houses.
Something like that. Yes. That would be great to have as a visual for the council to see what they look like, how nice they are, how they've been successful in different parts of the country. And help, you know, there's nothing like a visual rather than 10 pages of text.
But didn't we also make a nice, pretty brochure? Didn't we make a nice graphic? We could just give that to them also.
Again, this is an outlier of $100,000 study on Missing Middle that Horsey-Witten did, so we can provide the necessary backup documentation. And as a department, provide the information and have the discussion. And if the council wants a, you know, a five, 10-slide PowerPoint presentation of how we got there and why we're back here, we can absolutely provide that information and be prepared for that.
Sorry. On Post Road in Charleston, those white cottages, kind of very close to the mini super.
I don't know if that was a cottage or not. The original one was in East Greenwich, and I believe there's one in Tiverton. I'm not sure if the one in Charlestown is considered a cottage.
There are cottage-like versions in Rhode Island. Probably the true newer, traditional one was done in East Greenwich, just outside of Main Street on an old parking garage, parking repair facility.
So is everyone in agreement with Jamie's and Andy's suggestion that we make a motion for staff to draft the appropriate language that demonstrates why we put this in place, what the impact could be, and why we're recommending continuation? And then we don't have to say the part about we're going to work on.
I think we'd benefit from that, too.
And I think the idea of having a short PowerPoint just showing the historic background would be really helpful.
So we have a motion from Joe, is there a second? Second from Liz. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair, just clarity on the motion. The motion is to direct planning staff to ask the town council to re-adopt the cottage, village regulations.
Along with? Yes. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Are we going to get that informational packet? I mean, I wasn't here when cottage zoning came around.
I'm sure that it can be made available to...
Because we're being asked to go ahead and make a recommendation. But I'm not sure I feel I can make a recommendation.
I'll amend it to say that we, for staff, to prepare that memo with the proper context to be approved by the chairman and informational copies to be provided to the planning board members.
Sounds good. All those in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Planning Board Liaison Activities. Affordable Housing.
There was a meeting. We had some membership changes at the last meeting. Jamie facilitated the meeting, talked a little about the difference between our current inclusionary zoning and a comprehensive permit. And Jamie also talked a little bit about just other affordable housing elements and tried to bring the new members up to speed. I don't know, Jamie, you got one else to add to that?
I think we also, to those two points, the third point we talked about was the RFP that we have in draft that was submitted to the town council for review and guidance that was tabled to this coming council meeting next Monday. We originally had a meeting scheduled with Secretary Goddard from Rhode Island Housing. Two or three weeks ago, that was rescheduled. So I think there may be a recommendation to continue that to another date to allow us to meet with Secretary Goddard to know where we stand on funding. As I mentioned, through the Affordable Housing Collaborative, when we utilize Union Studios and Perrini Group, one of the examples they used for South Road School on a build-out scenario, I think, believe 50% affordable, 50% market rate, showed between a $5 and $6 million funding gap. What we're trying to do in meeting with the state is see how we close that funding gap. And if we have an idea on how we close that funding gap, it may change the expectations of the responders to the RFP and give us a more decisive outcome with regards to percentage of affordability, expectations of infrastructure at the site. Again, if we can bring sewer and water to the site or remove that funding gap, we may be able to have more flexibility on the percentage of affordable versus market rate and get more interest on a higher affordable percentage and a lower market rate percentage, because those infrastructure costs don't have to be borne by the developer. So again, we're looking forward to that meeting with the secretary. Unfortunately, it was pushed off, I think, to the middle of July, July 17.
It's funny, all of those factors, you could probably put it in the form of an equation. Funding plus affordability, you know?
So again, if we push the RFP right now, we would have scenario A. Town provides sewer to the site, town builds roads to the site, town brings water to the site. What is your development scenario? Scenario B, developers responsible for sewer and water on the site. What is your development scenario under that?
All right, thank you.
Good thing you're not taller, Jay.
I don't have anything to report on the waiting for the final wrap-up meeting for the city stewardship committee plan. Jay, have you heard anything?
We've reached out to Randy Collins from Data Group with regards to making sure they're in receipt of their accounts receivable. With regards to their billing, I have not heard back from Randy. But we will follow up on that. That's probably at 95%. So I know in speaking with Jay, they've closed the comment period for the stewardship members. So we're trying to incorporate any final comments into the final document and bring that to fruition.
Updates from planning staff?
The only probably additional one I have tonight is, if people aren't aware, Peter DiStefano did send in a letter of resignation. There's kind of an order to the process. It will be on town council's agenda on Monday night. They need to receive and accept that resignation letter. But, you know, life-work balance is a primary aspect with Peter's resignation. He appreciated the service and correlation and responsibility and interaction he had with the planning board. It's not a reflection of the planning board or the dynamics. It's just, it's expansion of business and responsibilities with that.
And how does our next regular agenda look?
Light right now.
Okay.
So... Yep. Right now, it appears there's two pre-apps, and I think that's it.
Is there TRC tomorrow? No TRC?
TRC was canceled. Correct, Jay?
Update on legal issues, is there anything?
Yes. Want to take one and pass it around?
Oh, no.
I'll confine my remarks to not more than an hour. Pardon me? No, sorry, not pre-approved. No, this is just a short thing. This is actually, was prepared by Amy. It's kind of, as it says, a quick reference chart to the bills that were passed. And it's actually more of a procedural thing at this point, telling when the effective date was or it will be, because some of them are already effective. And which ones are going to require local amendments, which, as you can see, is most of them. But it gives you the bill reference on each of these, so you can find it if you want to. If you can't wait for the long memo to come out and the attachment, you can go and find it out in the meantime. And then there's a couple of other things at the bottom that kind of affect land use, the Outdoor Dining Act, which of course you know is the Mattoonik Oyster Bar Bill. And the budget bill has stuff regarding home occupation and the LMI Act. So we've got a variety of stuff that you'll be hearing more about later. And I'm done for tonight.
Thank you, Andy. Plenty of reading for everyone. I think that's it. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Can I ask a quick question? Because Joe just reminded me of certification or training. Right, so we did the state training, and we got a certificate sent to us. And then you're supposed to do two hours of stormwater training, but nobody's given you any certificates. So for instance, I did the EWP meeting a couple of days ago, Emergency Watershed Protection. And I don't know if the town of South Kingston has ever applied for those monies. That's where you get federal money to buy at fair market value properties that are in flood zones to eliminate those people from... So I don't know if we're involved with that at all, and I also don't know how to get any credit for my time I spend watching these seminars.
I know the EWP has, there have been projects in the northern part of the state.
The Placasa River, yeah.
Yes, exactly. Andy?
So to get credit, you need to reach out to Nancy Hess at the Department of Administration, Division of Planning. They've got, I'm pretty sure they've got a page on the training.
But how's she going to know I was at that seminar?
Well, I mean, that's why I think you need to reach out to her, whether that's something that's been, like I was saying in jest here, but pre-approved. Is that, was there, were there any mechanism with the seminar for signing in or anything?
No, you registered for the seminar.
Okay. I just suggest you talk to her, because it's not real, it's not something I can handle. She's the one that does that. Usually, like I said, they try to get it approved in advance. That sounds like something that would be approvable for the training. But I don't know, it's not in my hands.
I actually even get that email because I did the state training with Nancy Hess, so I'm on some email list where seminars are always coming my way.
Okay. So just ask her about that. I will tell everybody, I'll give you a little heads up, because it's way out there. But November 15th is a Saturday. Saturday morning, there's going to be another session, training session, like we did last year. It'll be, again, a Saturday morning at the Crown Plaza, the in at the Crown Plaza there in Warwick. This one's going to be a little different, though. It's going to be more of a conventional, but along with what you were just saying, it's going to have a keynote speaker who is going to be Judge Lampier, the judge who handles the land court cases. He's going to be the keynote speaker. Then there are going to be breakout sessions for planning, zoning, and historic district commission separately. And Nancy is already planning the planning board breakout session to cover the coastal training credits that everybody needs. So that will be the planning board breakout session. So at least you'll get an hour of that credit there for that, maybe more. I don't know, you know, it's not that far along, but that is the idea.
Would be kind of nice to be able to ask some questions to the keynote.
There's supposed to be time left for questions. So it's just, it's in the works.
Great. Great.
And as I said, it's away, but if you want to, hold the date in your calendar.
Put it on your calendar, that's for sure.
That's Saturday morning.
Great, thank you. Motion to adjourn? Motion from Liz, second from Joe. All those in favor, say aye. Thank you, everyone.